Okay, so I will go ahead and call this mini to order. It is Thursday, February 11th. This is the regular city council meeting. We have myself, Mayor McLeer, council members Mahoney, Derry Berry, Cunningham, Blackstone, and Thomason. Council member Clemmer is unable to join us today. I'll go ahead and ask Pastor Whitney Moss to lead us in an indication and also welcome her to Fountain Inn. Pastor Moss is the new pastor at Fountain Inn Presbyterian, and she comes from Greer Presbyterian where she was the associate pastor. And welcome to Fountain Inn. I hope you've enjoyed your first month here.
Thank you. I have. I'm happy to be with you all today. Let's pray. Loving God, as we gather this night, we thank you for the gift of this day. We give thanks for the work that has been done and for the work yet to be done. And so we pray that you be in the business which is before this body this night. Almighty God, bless those who hold office in the government of Fountain Inn, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote the general welfare of all in our community. Merciful God, we pray for our city, our community, our state, our country, and the world as we continue to battle the COVID pandemic. We pray for those who are sick and suffering. We remember loved ones we have lost to the virus. We pray for those facing economic hardships. We pray for educators and families who continue to navigate unprecedented challenges. We pray for and give thanks for our healthcare workers, first responders, essential workers, and those working to vaccinate our community. Lord, we know you are a God of hope and peace. And so we rest in the hope that the end of the pandemic will come. We rest in the hope of brighter tomorrows. And we rest in the good hope of right relationships and peace for all in this city we love and call home. We offer this prayer in your holy name. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, Pastor Moss, and we look forward to seeing you around town. All right. Next up is public forum, and I believe Ms. Woods told me there is no one signed up. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Just a reminder for everybody. We'll do voice votes on consent agenda and adjournment, but all action items will be roll call. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which are the minutes from the January 14th city council meeting?
So, Mu?
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Mahoney. All in favor? Any discussion or questions? Sorry. Hearing, not all those in favor of approval, please say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is public hearing for CDBG money. Mr. Bell and GCRA representative, correct?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Aima Wabadoo with the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sean. My name is Aima Wabadoo. I'm the program director for Greenville County Redevelopment Authority. I'll say GCRI. GCRI has been here since 1974. Mr. Mahoney was one of our board members a long time ago. And one of the things we have, our mayor responsibility, is to be able to administer the federal entitlement funds that come to the county. So thank you for having us to start the public hearing process for fiscal year 2021 for the annual action plan. And what is the annual action plan? That's basically as an entitlement community that continues to receive federal funds. We have to send a proposal to HUD telling them what we're going to do with the funds they give to us. The funds that Greenville County, as an Auburn county, we received a community development block grant, home funds, and emergency solutions grant. Emergency Solutions Grant is countywide, so it's not particular to any particular city. So that's why it's actually the one funding that we can use within City of Greenville, because that's a fund they don't receive, although City of Greenville is a separate entitlement community. For the purpose of this public hearing, we're going to be talking about Community Development Block Grant, but I would say CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Program. And that is particularly to the allocation of funds that come to the city of Fountain Inn. And when I say fiscal year 2021, I'm talking about the year starts July 1, 2021, and ends June 30, 2022. And this fiscal year 2021 is actually the second year of the new five-year plan. When came before you last year, we were talking about a five-year plan which we finished, and that was basically starting in 2020 was the first year. So we have right now a five-year plan that HUD has approved that tells us basically different strategies. We'll address housing goals, community development, economic development, homelessness, neighborhood revitalization program. So, and now for this second year, we will talk about the funds that is to fund it for this, for City of Fountain Inn. But I'll talk about what is community development block grant? What are the things that you can do? The main thing for federal funding, the CDBG funds, that you must serve lower moderate income families. That is the main thing. Although HUD has a separate rule saying that at least 70% of your users towards the CDBG must serve lower moderate income family. But I can tell you that each year during our CAPEA report, we actually use 80-something to 90% of CDBG funds specifically for low moderate income families. And it's not just households, it's about jobs and things like that. As I talk about it, I'll tell you different ways and different things that we achieved or things that we do with it as well. And another thing, one of the other objectives is addressing slum and blight. That's like if you have dilapidated properties that you want to demolish and things like that. And another major objective is addressing urgent need. Right now, we are in that particular mode where we have the COVID pandemic. So we have separate funding that HUD has actually given to us to address some of those health issues and persons impacted by the pandemic as well. So going through that, then the other thing is, what is the home funds? What can you do with home funds? Home funds basically is ensuring that you're able to provide either increase the supply of affordable housing or making sure the affordable housing is accessible and attainable. So it could be in form of it's a new construction of affordable units or it's for homeownership or rental or making the homes, preserving existing homes and making sure they're still affordable to people or ensuring that people are able to have access to purchase their homes by probably providing down payment assistance. And I'm going to talk about the different housing ways, activities that we do to achieve affordable housing. So, and one of the things I gave to you shows the three-year allocation just for you to see how that fund has been, what's been going on. But usually, one of the things we do is since at this time, we don't have the actual allocation for the county. We start the last year or the current year as the base year. So once they give us the final numbers, then we'll make the adjustment for you to see. So for, I'm not going to talk about fiscal year 2020. The actual final numbers is 116,966 for CDBG. So that begins the base amounts that we're going to start for the year. But if you compare from the document I gave to you, the 2019 and 20, there was an increase. So once the final number comes and the overall allocation to the county on CDBG increases, it goes around. We use the same HUD formula to distribute in all the municipalities as well. The program income funding is basically a process from the investment of your grant. So if we sell a house and we built that house with home funds, it comes back to you as program income. So you're able to use it and recycle it and use it again for another program, either a new house or any other thing or rehab or things like that. So the CDBG program income is $2,000. That's basically, I can tell you that it's probably most likely from interest from folks that have used the funds to either do rehab of their houses or business loans that we gave out and people are paying. It comes back again as program income. The home grant for this year, like I said, we're starting 2020 as the base year. The proposed allocation is 42,403. Your program income and home is 7,000. So maybe most likely from properties we have from rental, if they are paying back, it comes back. If there's an interest payment or a rehab loan, it comes back as program income. So as you have more, it comes back. Last year, you actually got a huge program income because of the house that we sold. And so you don't lose it. It's there in your budget. You have more home funds and program income funds that you can use to build another house. So you never lose it, and it just continues to increase. If we have more projects coming, we'll do the same. Any sale comes back to you, and you have more growth in program income, and you can use on other projects as well. So proposed budget for this year for fiscal year 2021 is 168,368. And now we'll talk about some of the proposed allocation of funds. And this is usually done in conjunction with the city administrator, basically taking into consideration projects that you have, your goal for the year, things that you want to achieve, and all this distribution and things that are coming up as well. So for fiscal year 2021, we, all the home funding, the program income and the home grants, will of course are putting back straight into new construction of affordable housing. We want to see more houses built in the city of Fountain Inn. And then we're putting some aside for rent reserve because we do have property that is a rental property that we have to give, we'll have to do any kind of upkeep and things like that. So that's $5,000 set aside for that as well. We also have a line called Investor Program. As a result of the five-year plan that we did and also the housing study that was done in 2018, we realized that a lot of landlords or mom and pops with properties that want to fix or fix your houses, they pass on that cost to their tenants. And we want to make sure that it's a way to preserve your existing housing stock, but still making sure that you have affordable housing. So at a reduced interest rate and a convenient payment, you're able to fix that house and make sure you have somebody who is low on mod and you're able to keep the rent affordable. So we introduced the new program that gives up to $25,000 to anybody that want to fix their rental property and be able to make sure that unit is available to someone who is low on moderate. We also set aside money for demolition because if you have any potential properties that you want to demolish, we're going to have that as well. And then, of course, the facade program. We've got a lot of interest this year coming on a facade that we'll be talking to the city administrators as we go, you know, as the approvals come along. And of course, the economic development loan. Talked about, we provide up to $25,000 to small business owners to either if you're a startup or even existing. So it's a very low interest loan, like a five or seven-year repayment. And it just keeps, you're able to stop, you know, as long as you're able to hire or retain a low and moderate income person. So that's another way to create a job opportunity for any low and moderate income household. Then, of course, you have your sub recipients, which is you use some funding towards your senior center and also the Center for Community Services in Fountain Inn. And I'm going to talk a little bit about Center for Community Services and some of the things they've helped us with the COVID as we go along. I did say I was going to mention some of the housing activities that we do. This is one opportunity we're able to let people know what things that are available to them in the county. And these housing activities are not just done with home funds. It's a combination of even emergency solutions grant. GCRI, we're able to get finance developers' projects, even light tech project. We have some going on now. And actually, at this particular time, our notice of funding availability is going on so developers can apply for funding towards their projects. If they are providing, they are submitting low income housing tax credit or even any development, if it's homeownership or rental. So we're able to get finance with the home funds and then also with the Affordable Housing Fund that Greenville County has given to us. So this is a project we do with our partners and also GCRI. We do develop those houses as well ourselves. And into our partners, the CWC, they're able to help first-time home buyers with down payment assistance. As of last year, this fiscal year, we increased that to $10,000. So because we've seen the housing cost in Greenville has really increased and it's really hard to just give the $5,000 and it's, you know, make it more affordable. So with the $10,000, we're able, each year, CWC is able to help up to 25 persons, first-time home buyers, purchase their own home. So this is another way for existing or new construction. We have houses that we didn't even build or any of our partners, but people are able to buy any house around. And this way, it makes housing attainable and affordable and accessible. We also help with rental assistance using the Emergency Solutions Grant. And I said that's a program that is countywide. You can imagine how many folks, especially with the COVID, where people need down, you know, just deposit for a new place or just assistance with the rental homes that they have. This basically helps you to address folks that are literally homeless. A lot of people or persons at risk of homelessness. So with this assistance, we're able to help a lot of people. We have minor home repairs. You can get up to $10,000 if you're a senior or persons living with disability, and this is all going to be grant. And it's all towards preserving existing homes, ensuring that people are able to age in place and making sure that they're able to, the upkeep of the homes are still going on. And, you know, maintain your existing housing stock. Besides the minor repairs, we have a regular repair program, which is for everybody. There's a low interest law, maybe one or two or three based on your income. You're able to get up to $25,000 to fix your home. Again, goes back to preserving existing stuff and ensuring that the house continue to remain affordable. And one of the things we have is sometimes with the, right now, mortgage product is really good. But in cases where people are having a problem getting mortgages, with the houses that we build, we're able to finance those houses as well with a mortgage loan fund program. So all of this, basically, is a combination of the CDBG home and is just using different creative ways to make things continue to push affordable housing in the county. The Community Development Block Grants is a lot more vast. You could do housing pretty much towards rehab or repair. But one of the things with the CDBG, it's one thing that you're able to do infrastructure projects. We finished the Trips Street project in Sanctified Hill. It's also another thing you could do facility improvement. If the facility improvement is targeted for a limited clientele like seniors, you could do so much more improving that facility. But if it's not, you could just, if it's a facility that is anywhere, but for everybody, you can only address ADA facilities. So this is the kind of things you can do with CDBG. You can also demo, like we said, all this slum and blight. All the business loans are CDBG funds. So that's, you know, the facade and all that. Those are all CDBG funds. And then we encourage neighborhoods to have like what we call neighborhood capacity building. We give them grants up to $2,000. So it just helps them fund themselves together and their things that it can do, some low hanging fruit that it can take care of without, you know, and builds them to be able to take on setting things by themselves. So that is one thing that we have. Like I said, the small business loans that we have is $25,000. But with facade, we're able to give $5,000 for businesses to improve the facade of their, you know, their stores. And it's a forgivable loan for five years. As long as you're there, you could do an owning or sign or any exterior improvement. We're not going to, you know, as long as you're able to create, you retain or maintain a low mod job. Those are the two major things for, I mean, for economic development. Of course, you're paying back low interest, but you must hire or retain a low mod job. So I showed you, you guys have different pictures of the facility improvement. But I want to talk about the COVID because this was something more than just a particular city. We, as a county, as an Auburn county, we were able to receive funding towards the Community Development Block Grant, CV, which is the COVID next, and then Emergency Solutions Grant. And these two funds were able to target rental assistance, mortgage assistance, businesses, utility assistance. I can tell you that we really didn't start, we didn't hit the ground running until like sixth, August and September because the funds came through like into summer and we had to do all the contracts. Center for Community Services, one of the sub recipients that worked with us. They are still working on having, providing rental assistance, utility assistance, and food to anybody that needs it. If you've been impacted by COVID, we're able to pay the rent. We're able to pay your mortgage. I'll just say from the time we start for December 2020, at the end of December 2020, we helped almost 1,000 families. You know, with rents, and these are unduplicated numbers and we're multi-months of arrears of payments and things like that. And it's still going on. So, and you can see the need is still there to be able to help with the mortgage and rental assistance utilities. So Center for Community Services expanded before Fountain Inn, Simpsonville, and Molding. And if we multiply that, that's over close to 23 persons total from the households. So that's, that's funds that's still coming on and all that. The house in Sanctified Hill is sold to Lomard. Was an excellent project. We want to do more of this in the city, but in any place at all, not just Sanctified Hill. So we'll look forward to doing, creating more opportunities, affordable housing. And you also put some pictures of the senior center. I can tell you that as of today, we walked out. It's Joe confirmed to me, everybody, it's all closed out and all, everything is done. So it's an open facility that's there for use. We just want to say a nice senior sign on that. So I also added something about income because there's always the question of what are we talking about? Low and moderate income families. I'll give you, for example, Fountain Inn is one of those that you have two different areas we have to work with. Your Sanctified Hill community is in your Lawrence County. So we usually have to use the Lawrence County Income Guideline, which is very different from the Greenville County. And I can tell you that right about the Greenville County area medium income as of 2020 has it at 74,000 per year. Lawrence County has about 45,000 per year. So there's a lot of, you know, the disparity is much there. So when we build over that, we have to use that income guideline for Lawrence County. But just to give an example, for a family of four, when we say somebody's low income, which is 30% below, for a family of four, making 22,400. And if you say the person is 50% below, for a family of four, they're 37,450. And if they're 80% below, that is 59,900, almost 60. But you have to see that for a family of one is making $15,000. And you have to ask yourself, and they can only afford 30% of that money towards their rent. There is no rent there, about $300. So the need to have the subsidy, the need to have the home funds to make sure you have, they have access to affordable housing. Just going through the COVID approvals, most of the average rent I was seeing, it was nothing, most of them were $800, $900 for one bedroom. So that means even for a family of two, for 30% and below, it's 18,000. So for them to be able to afford and pay 30% of their gross, they're going to have to work twice the number of hours. So just to put in perspective how difficult it is. And now with the addition of COVID makes it even more difficult. So basically, the process is, as we go through the different public hearing for all the different municipalities, expect that the resolution be adopted before the end of March, March 31st preferably, because it goes through other processes. We have to go through the county council approval and all that. Anticipated submission of the annual action plan is in May. HUD could change it if we don't have the number, the funding. We will need to reallocate, like we said, you know, saying that everything. But at least by May, June, that will be sent to HUD. So, how many questions? Be glad to answer.
Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you so much. I know this has done a lot of great work for our community over the years. So I look forward to having another year of positive impact for the families that need it. Thank you so much. All right. That concludes the public hearing for the CDBG Annual Action Plan. We'll move on to the city administrator's report. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Start off by saying that our downtown parking signs for the Wayfinding signage project are set to be installed on February 19th. For our long-awaited Woodside Village project, an RFP has been released to the development community and proposals are due by February 26th. We are anticipating the rollout of our brand-new website sometime next week. And for our proposed new Fountain Inn Natural Gas Public Works Facility, a design-build request for qualifications has been released and proposals are due on February 22nd. In the natural gas department, we are about 70 new customers away from reaching 10,000 customers, which is kind of a big threshold for us. Also, Fountain Inn Natural Gas had the lowest natural gas rates for January 2021 for all of North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia natural gas systems surveyed. In the Parks and Recreation Department, we were selected to host the 12-U Basketball State All-Star Tournament, and that's going to be held on March 5th and 6th at the Activity Center. Our spring baseball softball registration opened up on February 1st, and that will run Our spring baseball softball registration opened up on February 1st, and that will run through the end of the month, uh, through February 28th. And also the City of Fountain has rejoined Park Hop in order to feature our really wonderful new, uh, facility in Emmanuel Sullivan Sports Complex to the rest of the upstate. It's a bit of a, uh, a scavenger hunt type of, uh, a deal for families and they can go on, uh, they can download an app and go to all of the featured parks i- in the upstate and, and they can win prizes. And so we, we feel like this is going to help uh, bring more attention to that wonderful facility. In the Public Works Department, we are moving forward with our, uh, RIA Sewer Rehabilitation Project. A pre-construction meeting was held via Zoom on January 28th, and a notice to proceed was issued for February 15th. Substantial completion is scheduled for October 12th and final completion is scheduled for November 11th. Also, um, I sent counsel an email today about our finalized roadway and sidewalk inventory and assessment that I had commissioned and, um, there's a lot of details, uh, in that, uh, file that I sent you all, but we now have, uh, an inventory table of all of the roads and sidewalks in our city limits. So we know what county it's in. We know the official road, uh, name, number. We know who owns it, whether or not it's a City of Fountain Road, a state road or a county or potentially a private road. We know the linear feet. We know whether or not that road has sidewalks, whether, if sidewalks are on one side of the street or both or none at all. Um, and probably the most important is that we have an objective ranking, uh, of the road's condition for every road and sidewalk here in the city with a 10 being, uh, the best or representing a, a nearly a brand new road and zero being the worst. And sidewalk rating system is the exact same. And then we also, in that data, have the page number on a map on where you can find that road. For each road and sidewalk in that data, there is a report and it talks about the day and time it was observed, talks about the pavement type, it's got written comments on observed deficiencies, and it has a photograph of all of the roads and sidewalks. And did want to highlight that it is only taking into account the condition of, of the road. So it's not taking into account traffic, vehicle counts or anything like that. It's only a visual assessment of the condition of the road. Staff feels like this is going to be, uh, a great tool as we, uh, budget our road funds every year and going to Lawrence County Transportation Committee as well as the Greenville County Transportation Committee as well as asking, uh, SC DOT, um, to, to make repairs to, to their state owned roads as well. I've already sent it to all of those entities and, uh, let me know if you have any questions. Moving along, uh, well, the last thing I wanted to highlight is that at the Yacht Center for Performing Arts, the Kingsmen were originally scheduled for February 13th, but that has been rescheduled to February 27th at 6:00 PM. And they also have John Conley performing on February 18th.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I had one quick question on our new website. Will the road inventory list be available to the public?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, because I know a lot of people, it answers a lot of some of the first questions that we all get about roads. And I know it helped, it helps us internally, you know, answer those questions fast as opposed to, you know, calling, calling Roger or Greg to, to, to figure it out quickly. But, uh, I know for the public, that might be a useful tool for them as well.
We will definitely get that on there. Um, it, it may not be on there on, on launch day next week, but we will, as we are, uh, all of staff is, uh, trying to get trained up and trying to get, uh, acclimated to, to the new website, but we will get it up there as soon as we can.
Great. And I'd encourage everyone, if you haven't, I know we only got it earlier today, but to take a quick look at it, it's, it's pretty helpful. So thank you, Sean. Any good questions for Mr. Bell? I don't see or hear any. So we'll move on to unfinished business ordinance 2020 dash 001 Animal Care, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance 2021 dash 001 for second reading. This is an ordinance to amend chapter five, animal control, section five dash six, by specifying the care to be provided to animals and to prohibit tethering unless certain conditions exist. Uh, based off recent ordinance changes from the city of Greenville and Greenville County, a, a resident of Fountain Inn, Ms. Lydia Lively has asked city council to consider similar ordinance changes for Fountain Inn regarding animal care. Uh, the citizen has gathered community support for the ordinance via, uh, an online petition. And the proposed ordinance specifies that animal owners must provide sufficient wholesome food, clean freshwater, proper shelter and protection from the weather, veterinary care when needed to prevent suffering and humane treatment. It also makes it unlawful for a person to tether an animal while outdoors unless certain conditions are met.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Uh, is there a motion to approve on, on second reading ordinance 2020 dash 001?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Any discussion or questions? Ms. Dairy Berry?
Yes, um, as I read it, in my understanding, the, uh, the finding structure, because I didn't see that in the packet this week. I mean, did we make some changes to it? I'm for the whole first part that you read. My concern is with the tethering part, especially for the people that live in my ward, because I've been, uh, kind of driving around looking at, at, um, dogs that are outside and whether or not they have appropriate shelter and and fences and things like that. So how does that finding structure work? Because I'm concerned about that being an undue hardship on some of the people that live in my ward.
Thank you, Councilmember. I believe we, we covered this, uh, last month, but I'll have David Holmes chime in. Uh, but my understanding is that there was no change necessarily to wait to the way that works is that it's a municipal ordinance violation, which I believe carries, uh, a penalty of $500. Uh, but David can clarify.
That's, that's right. I want to make sure I understood what your question was, but it is the general penalty. But this ordinance hasn't changed from the first reading. It still reads the same way. And it, it, it just requires adequate shelter. It doesn't go through a, a lot of detail about that. Uh, in other words, it doesn't put on a lot of requirements, except it needs to be adequate and the animal needs to be able to be protected in the event of harsh weather. The tethering is always an issue that I have seen that some folks are happy with, some folks are not. That is to prohibit it in general. But this allows it to, to occur. You just have to meet all these requirements.
Right. Which I think, I mean, this is my, what I understand is the person has to be out there, has to be watching whether dog is tethered. It can't be too, more than two hours in a 12 hour period. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I just feel I'm for, I really think that we do need to update and be more specific about our, our ordinance and make sure that pets are treated well and taken care of. Um, I'm just concerned about what I observed in my ward, that, that that would be a problem.
The only piece I would add, Mr. Dairy Berry, that, um, and I know Chief Hamilton is here. I don't know if he's at poised and ready, but, uh, uh, I know he's on the call, but, um, Mr. Bell can answer first if Mr. Hamilton's not, not able to, to jump on. Um, I think he's here for something else. Um, so, uh, a lot of, uh, I, my one, my one thing I sent to Sean when I first read it was how lengthy that particular portion is and a lot of specificity, which is good on one hand, but you know, driving around, you know, you're kind of like, you're going to sit there with a microscope and look at things. I think this is mostly intended as if there's a call and this is a response to an issue, uh, they're able to, uh, to, to, they're not going to seek these out per se unless there's, there's a response as the typical way. Uh, also I remember, I think last time we talked about, um, I believe, or a lot of it when they first, when we first, if, if it's adopted, when we roll it out, will be a lo- very long period of education, especially for folks when it's a first time call and it's not a, you know, and it's, uh, you know, a misunderstanding or just a no, no knowledge of a change a- as well. It's, uh, that's what it's intended to do at first. Um, that's correct, Mr. Bell?
Yes, sir. Especially considering our current staffing challenges, this is not something that our police department or our public works department is, uh, prepared to go out just seeking violations. And, and that's really not even the, the intent of the ordinance. Uh, the, the intent is in what, you know, especially right now with, with our current staffing situation is when, when we receive a complaint that, uh, uh, that we would respond and, and this would be the new ordinance. And then, and I do agree that there would be, uh, good portion of time that's going to take to, to get citizens educated on it. I think warning, uh, tickets or, or just conversations with, uh, property owners is, is going to be needed.
And I also believe with the new, I mean, not to put too much stock into, you know, the, the new website for fixing things, but I think we are, we may, we would be able to also, if this is passed, publish it there to help communicate it to people. Um, I think last time they had mentioned putting a note, like City Hall somewhere too. I mean, I understand your concern, Mr. Brown, kind of laying out some other, some other strategies that I think kind of help inform the public and get them used to it. I don't know if that addresses your concern specifically, but surrounds it.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I still feel it's written very restrictive. And I, I have concerns about, about how restrictive it is. I think we need to do, definitely need to do some education and awareness and, and support. Because I don't want people being, getting in trouble or being fined repeatedly because they happen to have their dog on their chain in their backyard longer than two, two hours a day.
Well, Ms. Dairy Berry, I can tell you this, um, the city has a number of ordinances about buildings, about grass, and this would be in that type of thing. And the city's, um, uh, is only looking for compliance. So when, when we find issues, we typically tell people this is an issue. You need to make a change. And as long as that occurs, then that's what happens. They're not looking to hand, hand out tickets and penalize people. It's just trying to get them to come along. We, we only end up issuing tickets when people just say, I'm not going to do what I need to do.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Any other questions or comments? You aren't hearing none. Uh, Ms. Woods, we have a person, a second for approval? If you want to do the roll call vote.
Sure. Councilmember Mahoney?
Hi.
Councilmember Thomason?
Hi.
Councilmember Dairy Berry?
Hi.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Hi.
Councilmember Blackstone?
Hi.
Mayor McClear?
Hi. But passes six oh. I'll move on to the next item, an unfinished business ordinance 2020 dash 002 Clinton Newberry Natural Gas Territory Agreement. Mr. Bell and Mr. Noriega.
All right. I will start it off, Mayor. Uh, this is ordinance 2021 dash 002 for second reading. This is an ordinance to enter into a territorial agreement with Clinton Newberry Natural Gas Authority concerning the provision of natural gas in Lawrence County and to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Uh, this ordinance comes about, uh, because of South Carolina Supreme Court opinion that was issued in 2019.
Lovely.
Lawrence CPW, uh, versus City of Fountain Inn, which concerned municipality statutory ability to provide utility services beyond its corporate limits. Uh, as a result of that case, the Lawrence County Council has strongly urged the governmental entities that own and operate natural gas utilities in Lawrence County to reach an, an agreement concerning territories in which governmental, uh, natural gas utility will operate and provide service. Uh, City of Fountain Inn and Clinton Newberry Natural Gas have met numerous times. We have reached, uh, an agreement. Um, it's my understanding that the Clinton Newberry Natural Gas Authority Board has approved this agreement. And so it is, uh, our city council is just being asked to approve this agreement on second and final reading. And if I need to, uh, share my screen and pull up, um, a map of, of that territory, I can. And then I also have our natural gas director, Eduardo Noriega, that can answer any questions.
Sorry, before a motion or a second, does anyone need that pulled up as a reference? Not, not at this time. Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve on second reading, uh, Clinton Newberry Natural Gas Territory Agreement?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thomason. Any questions? Or comments?
Mr. Mayor, this is David Holmes. I, I will just tell you and confirm, Mr. Bell said, I received a letter from Clinton Newberry Natural Gas's attorney that their board had voted to approve this agreement. They're not like you. They can do it by resolution. So it only took one vote. And they understood we were waiting to vote on second reading until after they had approved it. So they had a meeting and they did approve it. They've notified me it has been approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I want to thank Sean, David and Eduardo for their work on this, uh, getting it done. I know it took a couple of meetings, but, uh, appreciate the hard work. And I know it's not quite done yet, uh, with the, with some other territory, but I'm glad we got this one done. Um, any questions, any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote for approval. Uh, Ms. Woods?
Councilmember Mahoney?
Hi.
Councilmember Thomason?
Hi.
Councilmember Dairy Berry?
Hi.
Councilmember Cunningham?
I'm sorry, I?
Councilmember Blackstone?
Hi.
And Mayor McClear?
Hi. Motion passes six oh. Move on to new business, uh, fiscal 2122 budget timeline. Uh, Mr. Bell and Ms. Reed?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Administrator, Naomi Reed.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, attached to your packet tonight, you'll find the proposed FY 2021, 2022 budget timeline for your approval. Um, I'm not going to spend time going through each of the dates, uh, that you have before you. Um, but I would just like to take a second to talk a little bit about the process and highlight a few of those dates on the timeline. Uh, one of Sean's directives, um, when he came to the city for my department was to improve the budget, um, process by streamlining it, formalizing the, the timeline and just adding that layer of transparency that, that council and our citizens, um, desire. And so we've, each year we've come up with this budget timeline and, um, every year it gets better. This year we've, we've had three opportunities for the budget workshops for council to go over things, um, to dig a little deeper into things like personnel, um, health insurance, debt, um, capital items, and we've even brought in our financial advisors to go a little bit deeper, a little bit more than, than what my department can go. And so our first workshop is scheduled for April 1st. Um, as it gets closer to that date, Sean and I will come up with a agenda for your, for your review. Um, if ahead of that, that you have specific items that would you would like us to tackle at that budget workshop, please just let Sean know and we will start working on those items and put that as our priority. Our next budget workshop that we have scheduled on the agenda is May 6th. And then a final one, which, excuse me, also includes an opportunity for our public hearing is on June 3rd. Uh, one of Sean's other directors from my department was to separate the public hearing from the final reading, which gives, uh, council the opportunity to hear from our citizens prior to making that, that, um, budget, prior to getting that budget adopted. So with that, I'm recommending that, uh, you approve the FY 2021, 2022 budget timeline.
Okay, Ms. Reed, uh, is there a motion to approve the budget timeline?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dairy Berry and also Mr. Cunningham. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dairy Berry, and also Mr. Cunningham. Any questions? I don't see or hear any. All right. I'll ask for a roll call for approval. Ms. Woods?
Councilmember Mahoney?
Hi.
Councilmember Thomason? Councilmember Dairy Berry?
Hi.
Councilmember Cunningham? Councilmember Blackstone? And Mayor McClear?
Hi. All right, that passes six oh. We'll move on to the last item in our new business, the allocation of Greenville County CDBG and Home Funds. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is twenty-twenty-one dash zero zero one. This is formally adopting everything that Ms. Ima Wamadu talked about in the public hearing. If you have any questions, you'd be happy to answer. But this, this, again, formally the allocation from Greenville County redevelopment authority to the City of Fountain Inn for those various funding sources.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the allocation of CDBG R twenty-twenty-one dash one?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dairy Berry. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Woods will ask for a roll call vote.
Okay. Councilmember Mahoney?
Hi.
Councilmember Thomason? Councilmember Dairy Berry?
Hi.
Councilmember Cunningham? Councilmember Blackstone?
Hi.
And Mayor McClear?
Hi. I don't know if we got Mr. Cunningham.
Sorry, I had to put him on mute because there was some background noise. I'm trying.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I thought I heard him, sorry.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right, that's into the new business. We need to go into, I need a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of contractual agreement with the school district of Greenville County. On, on coming out of executive session, council may take action on items discussed in executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Before I do, we'll do a voice vote, and that's just those watching and streaming. This record, this live stream will end. If there is no action to be taken, we will adjourn an executive session. If there is action, you will see another live stream pop up on your Facebook feed. So that's kind of how this works. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of going to executive session for the discussion of a contractual agreement with the school district of Greenville County, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, Mr. Bell, if you'll take us into executive session, so we'll just pause for a moment.